I would like to call those board meeting orders. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or corrections to our agenda?
Other than the personnel addendum that each of you have at your spots, no other changes.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve that as presented?
I move we accept the addenda as presented.
All right, I have a motion. Anyone like a second?
Sure.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to our recognitions and presentations, starting with the Superintendent's Excellence Awards.
Good evening. This evening, we will be recognizing the Superintendent's Excellence Awards. Our first group of awards goes to students who qualified for Nationals with Business Professionals of America at South and Central High Schools during the State Leadership for state. Canan Wendell is their coach. Conference. Will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? Sue Montoya is their sponsor. Will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? And will all the wrestling students, please line up next to Mr. Hall and their sponsor? And will all the National Business Professionals of America students, please line up next to Mr. Hall and their sponsor at this time? The following students placed as state and national qualifiers. Caleb Copeland, freshman, state qualifier. South, Ulysses Salas, Senior, Global Marketing Team. Tyler Ross, Senior, who was unable to attend this evening. Carson Ochoa, freshman, state qualifier. Drake Walters, Senior, Global Marketing Team. Alvaro Escobedo, Senior, Global Marketing Team. Brenner Vogon, Junior, Brenner placed fourth at state. Ross Bowling, Senior, Global Marketing Team. Eli Truay, Senior, unable to be here this evening. Alan Heberly, Senior, Alan placed fifth at state. Marissa De Luna Gomez, Junior, Advanced Spreadsheet Applications. Central, Gillian Coikendall, Junior, Small Business Management Team. Domage Smith, Senior, state qualifier. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations.
Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations to you guys. Good job. Good job. Keep it up. Good job. Good job. Congratulations.
Next, we will recognize student wrestlers at Central High School who qualified at state. Shannon Peters is their coach. Will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? And will all of Salina Central's wrestling students, please line up next to Mr. Hall and their sponsor? Caleb Copeland, freshman, state qualifier. Carson Ochoa, freshman, state qualifier. Brenner Vogon, Junior, Brenner placed fourth at state. Alan Heberly, Senior, Alan placed fifth at state. Domage Smith, Senior, state qualifier. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations to you guys. Good job. Good job. Keep it up. Good job. Congratulations.
Next, we will recognize student wrestlers at Central High School who qualified at state. Shannon Peters is their coach. Will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? And will all of Salina Central's wrestling students, please line up next to Mr. Hall and their sponsor? Donovan Will, Senior, Donovan had a season record of thirty-four eight and placed fourth at state. De Reese Burse, Senior, De Reese had a season record of twenty-five seventeen. Drew Bergoon, sophomore, Drew had a season record of thirty-five four and placed third at state. Taylan Peters, sophomore, Taylan had a season record of thirty-five seven and placed fifth at state. Cole Butts, sophomore, Cole had a season record of twenty-fourteen. Cooper Char, freshman, Cooper had a season record of seventeen twenty-three. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now.
Congratulations. Congratulations to you. Congrats. Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Good job. Hey, good job. Good job.
And our next group of awards this evening goes to student swimmers at South High School who qualified at state. Dustin Bergard is their coach. Will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? And will all the South swimming students, please line up next to Mr. Hall and their sponsor at this time? Alex Dombrowski, Senior, Alex is a member of the two hundred medley relay, four hundred freestyle relay, and two hundred freestyle relay. Trenton Fabrizius, Junior, Trenton is a member of the two hundred medley relay, four hundred freestyle relay, and two hundred freestyle relay. Paul Armbrust, sophomore, Paul is a member of the two hundred medley relay and the four hundred freestyle relay. Clayton Brown, sophomore, will be unable to attend this evening. Brian Taylor, freshman, Brian is a member of two hundred medley relay, four hundred freestyle relay, and two hundred freestyle relay. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Thanks so much. Congratulations. Proud of the work you do. Good job, guys. Good job. Good job.
We now recognize student swimmers at Central High School who qualified at state. Dustin Bergard is their coach. And will all the Central swimming students, please line up next to Mr. Hall and their Eldon Taskinen, Senior, Eldon is a member of the two hundred medley relay, one hundred butterfly, one hundred backstroke, and four hundred freestyle relay. Aaron Nesting, Senior, Aaron is a member of the two hundred medley relay, two hundred freestyle relay, and four hundred freestyle relay. Brayden Tony, Junior, Brayden is a member of the two hundred medley relay and two hundred freestyle relay. Gage Burmaster, sophomore, Gage is a member of the two hundred medley relay, one hundred butterfly, one hundred backstroke, and four hundred freestyle relay. Adrian Ruvakaba, sophomore, Adrian is a member of the two hundred freestyle relay. Ethan Schulte, freshman, Ethan is a member of the one hundred backstroke and four hundred freestyle relay. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now.
Again, great job. Thanks for your leadership.
Thank you.
Thanks for your leadership. Very important. You're doing double duty. Good work, sir. Congratulations. Keep it up. Congratulations. Hey, good job. Good job.
Our final group of awards goes to student bowlers at South High School who qualified at state. Seth White is their coach. Please join Mr. Hall in the front? And will all the bowling students, please line up next to Mr. Hall and their sponsor The girls team included Caitlin Baker, Senior. Shelby Wood, Senior. Makalia Talbot, Senior. Michaela Talbot, Senior. Kinsey Miller, freshman. Bella Kazuhu, sophomore. The boys team took first at regionals and fourth at state. Dustin Lauffer, Senior. Indy Boland, Senior. Caleb Demel, Junior. Mason Leatherman, sophomore. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate?
Proud of what you guys do. Congratulations. We're really proud. Nice job. Congratulations. Congratulations. That's quite a performance from you guys. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job. Congrats. Congratulations. Congratulations.
All right, moving along to our approval of our consent agenda items, which include the minutes of our March fourteenth, twenty-seventeen regular meeting, our personnel report, our treasures report, our investment report, journal entries, and we're approving our encumbrance listing, which includes to McHaw and Gordon Construction, the amount of one hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and eighty-one cents to replace the damaged elevator at South High School. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve that?
Can I ask just a question about that? Mr. Epsom, I'm sure you'll know the answer to this. If that elevator had not been damaged, would we have continued to use the old one for a while, or?
Yes, ma'am. It was, we had it on to be replaced by way of the bond, and then we couldn't afford it. So it went away. And then we managed to get broken. The good news is, is we're getting it replaced for much less than it would have been.
Yeah, looks like.
So there's a happy accident that kind of happened. Nobody was hurt. And then insurance companies treated us fairly, so we're feeling pretty good about it.
Very good. Thank you for that information.
I move we accept the consent agenda.
All right. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to our public forum, if anybody would like to address the board, now is your Not seeing anybody rushing up. We'll move on to our action agenda items, starting with our athletic trainer services with Salina Regional Health Center.
Yes, Madam President, and this is a follow-up from the last Board of Education meeting we had two weeks ago, when the proposal was presented to the Board of Education for consideration to provide athletic trainer services for both of our two high schools by Salina Regional Health Center. As the Board recalls, for a number of years now, we've had an agreement with Kansas Western University to provide comparable services. We do believe that this would be an additional expenditure over what we have been paying in the past. It's a total of fifty thousand, fifty thousand, seven hundred, which is roughly about twenty-five thousand, one twenty-five for Central, twenty-five thousand, five seventy-five for South. But we also believe, with those increased costs, we also believe that we are receiving additional services that we were not receiving with Kansas Western University. And we believe that the quality of what we receive will be, will be higher. And also, I think the fact of that connection with healthcare provider in our community is a positive thing. One item I do want to clarify, and this was brought up, we had Dr. Day who came and visited before the Board at the last Board of Education meeting. I do want to clarify the fact that any time that we have a student athlete who's receiving services on, on the sideline, or on the court, or wherever it may be in the training room, and there's an injury, it is still the parent's decision as to where they want to refer their child from medical services, okay? So I want to make sure that that clarification is clear. Beyond that, we do have a number of folks here from Salina Regional Health Center. I don't know if the Board has any specific questions they would like to ask. If not, I would like to recommend to the Board of Education that we approve this athletic trainer agreement with Salina Regional Health Center for a two-year period, beginning July first, two thousand and seventeen, and ending on June third, two thousand and nineteen.
Madam President, I'd like to move that we approve the agreement with Salina Regional Health Center for athletic trainer services as presented, beginning July one, two thousand and seventeen, and ending on June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, as the cost of twenty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-five for Central High School, and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-five for South High School, and annual costs of fifty thousand, seven hundred dollars.
All right, I have a motion. And a second, any discussion?
I have a question. Do we, and I haven't read this in the last few days, so it may be in here, but do we have a plan for evaluation over time to make sure it's working?
We, we don't. I think we have an opportunity each annually to review the services that we have, and obviously, if we have, we have an opportunity, I think, to improve on those services, or correct them, or whatever the case may be. Do we have an opt-out agreement? Not necessarily. And I know we've had Erin Wright, who's been working on the contract. Can you speak to that, Ms. Wright?
Yeah, the, the contract has provisions in it for termination, for any reason, really, within thirty days. So it's not like as though we're bound to this for two years should some difficulties arise or trouble. Different ideas of services should be provided. And written amendments can be made to the agreement as well.
I just wanted to make sure we check back with it often to make sure it's going okay.
Right. I tell you what, what I would suggest to the Board is if you approve this agreement, then I think we would have at least an annual evaluation each year before we renew the second year to measure the quality of the services that we received during that time.
And do we understand that Kansas Wesleyan is dissolving its undergrad training program?
Yes, they are, as a fact. I think this year will be the last year, and that was part of the reason that precipitated this agreement, because what they have been, having to do is bring in some folks from the outside who actually were certified athletic trainers elsewhere, and they're working on their MBA here, so they were just kind of visiting here, working on their master's degree while they were providing athletic services. There were several occasions where they actually had to bring folks in who had still get certified when they were here. So I think from that standpoint, the fact that we're tied to a healthcare provider, I believe, will increase the quality of the services that we've received.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on, and our action agenda item to our seventeen eighteen textbook rental fees.
This is somewhat, Madam President, somewhat of a formality, but we do need to bring these back to the Board annually to set the, to establish the textbook rental fees for the upcoming school year. At this point in time, I'd recommend to the Board that we approve the textbook rental fees for seventeen eighteen with no changes. Essentially, that would be for grades K through five, it's, it's sixty dollars, but if you qualify for reduced lunches, it'd be thirty dollars. For middle school, it'd be sixty dollars, thirty dollars if you qualify for reduced lunches. Hundred dollars for high school, fifty dollars for reduced lunches. Of course, any student qualified for free lunch would have their textbook rental fees waived.
All right. Madam Chairman, I move we approve the textbook rental fees for the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen school year as presented.
All right, I have a motion and a second from Ramona. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to our seventeen eighteen participation fees.
And again, Madam President, somewhat of a formality, but I'm bringing this back to the Board, so we have our annual approval of the participation fees for seventeen eighteen. Again, no changes from prior year. There is a cap of two hundred and fifty dollars per family, so if they have multiple students, it won't be any higher than two hundred and fifty dollars per family. As far as participation, if they're in grades nine through twelve, it'd be a hundred dollars. If they qualify for, for reduced lunches, it'd be fifty. Qualify for free lunches, it'd be thirty dollars. For middle school, the comparable participation fees would be full price of fifty, twenty dollars if they qualify for reduced, and ten dollars if they qualify for, for free lunches. So I would suggest to the Board, ask the Board, recommend to the Board that we approve the participation fees for seventeen eighteen with no changes.
Marian?
I move that we approve the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen participation fees as presented.
All right, I have a motion. And a second from Nadra. Any discussion? Hearing?
I would like to suggest that it be made clear to the families what all they receive for this fee, and with the understanding that funding is stretched, and that this is one way they can help.
Absolutely, we can do that.
All right, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to our discussion agenda, which we have none, we'll move on to our school board reports and upcoming dates of importance. Sunday, May seventh, is our retirement reception and recognition at Lakewood at three P. M. Thursday, May eleventh, is our DCP graduation at Salina West at four P. M. Sunday, May fourteenth, is graduation, starting with South High School at two P. M., and then, then Central High School at five P. M. Thursday, May eighteenth, is the S A E C graduation ceremony at seven P. M. And Thursday, May twentieth, is our, is our next chamber legislative meeting, at the Chamber Annex at eight thirty. Brett, would you like to start us off with our committee reports?
I have nothing to report.
I have nothing to report, but I'm eager to hear from Ramona, Jana, and Ann, how NSBA went.
Thank you, I'll start then. Jana, Ramona, and I, and Bill, Mr. Hall, all just got back from Denver yesterday from the National School Board Association Convention. It was bursting with information and interesting things going on. Just a couple of things I'll mention that I got to participate in were discussions on digital literacy, and one of the ideas was to have kids get a digital driver's license to show they know the rules of the road and, for safety on, online, before they get to do much online. Another discussion was on social and emotional learning and mindfulness in the classroom, which several school districts have begun doing from kindergarten up to high school. And they were talking about kindergartners saying, well, my amygdala really got, really got riled up there. So that was fun to hear. I'm sorry that I'll have to miss the South High National Honor Society reduction tonight, because I think it's going on the same time as our meeting. So that's enough. There was lots more I could report from the convention, so thank you.
Nadra?
I attended the chamber meeting, legislative meeting on the eighteenth. Yesterday, I helped participate in interviewing six candidates for the lift as a lift recipient, and today I participated in allocations for twenty-first century grants and out-of-the-box grants.
Carol?
Two things. There were a number of us, and Brett, you were there as well, the South Middle School Disney concert in the band. That was just a terrific, terrific show for the kids, and I especially want to commend the South Middle School students and staff. They were superb. Beautifully behaved. Everything just went so smoothly, and I couldn't be prouder of, of our kids. And the performance of, of Mr. Gary's guitar students, and the little girl who is now a freshman, I think, at South High School.
Amazing.
Amaya is her name.
She was unbelievable.
What a voice. Terrific.
Ramona?
I too, went to the wonderful, exciting, fun, air guitar playing recognition for Mr. Gary and his guitar students. It was, it was amazing. And the, the gym looks awesome, so the construction projects are going very well. NSBA, I am now the most prepared new board member, don't believe that, but I attended pretty much all of the new board member sessions. Went to the first one, and I was hooked, because they were informative, they helped to strengthen that, that I believe I know now, and then gave me some information that I didn't realize was available. So it was amazing. It was a very, very worthwhile few days in Denver. Didn't get to see a lot of Denver, I'm glad to report. We did a lot of work, but it was, it was a really, really good opportunity, and I'm just glad I was able to attend that.
Okay, I, I too attended the South Middle School Disney celebration that they had, and it was amazing as well, and I thought it was a great, a great way to showcase the new gym, even before we've cut the ribbon, so to speak. I also attended the chamber legislative meeting on Saturday, well, I guess it would have been two Saturdays ago, and I also had the opportunity to speak at a women's luncheon right after that about board relations. I attended the conference in Denver, and I, probably the most memorable breakout session, I got to listen to Ruby Payne give her presentation on poverty, which I thought was very moving and very interesting. She had a lot of great facts. It was well-attended, I think that was standing room only. Also attended some great, speakers were there, Scott Kelly, the astronaut, and Huffington, how do you say her first name? Ariana Huffington was the other speaker, and I don't remember the one from Sunday.
Wes Moore.
All, all really great speakers, speaking to really good things. So I also attended, my first session on Friday was to learn about Robert's Rules of Order and how to run a board meeting, which people thought was very funny, because they were like, why are you in here when you don't, you don't even follow Robert's Rules of Order? But you'd be interesting, it was, it was incredibly interesting first breakout session for me. So we'll move on to our superintendent's report.
Yes, Madam President, thank you. And to follow up from, with Ms. Vossler, and Ms. Zimmerman, and Ms. Newsome, the NSBA convention really is an opportunity to explore other, I guess, knowledge, knowledge levels related to schools across the country. It's an opportunity to network with other board members across the country, and I've had the opportunity, opportunity in my career to have attended several, and, and, and a number of them, actually. And so this wasn't any different, but it's just the power of it, is you hear really quality speakers. You have an opportunity to visit with other board members from all over the country, districts that are larger and smaller, and, and just different demographic makeups. And, and you find out when you do that, that, you know, you're pretty happy where you are, because we have a lot of good things that are happening here in our school system, and you find that out, because I don't know, I've visited a number of folks, and, and there are literally just stories that we never have to deal with. And so I, I really appreciate the support of our community with that, as well as NSBA. Likewise, I thought the keynote speakers were really good. I thought the, the astronaut gentleman, and who had a twin, I always had it confused, but Captain Scott Kelly, but his twin was the brother of the, of, of.
The husband.
I'm sorry, the husband of the woman who was.
Gabby Gifford.
Gabby, there you go.
Gabby Gifford.
And, but I never made that connection. I knew that it was his last name. I thought, eh, but they're twins. And they used that to really experiment the longevity study in space, because Scott Kelly spent almost a year in space, and then, so I thought it was very interesting. And then, of course, Ariana, Ariana Huffington, I thought was also very, very good, and interesting. She really spoke a lot to technology, and the impact of technology, and really, you know, putting down your cell phones and focusing on interpersonal communications. And I thought that was very telling from her as well. I hadn't heard her before, and then when she started speaking with the accent, it's like, oh, okay, you know? But, but very, very interesting, interesting lady. And then I had an opportunity to attend a number of breakouts. One had to do with current tech ed development, which we're heavy into right now, and, and the impact of that moving forward, and the future of current tech ed development moving forward, which I thought was very, very important. I had another breakout I attended on arts for all, celebrating sustaining district arts programs, and I found from that that we are much further ahead of the curve than most districts are in terms of the partnership that we have in our community for further in the arts, and both in our community and in our school system. So I thought that was also very, very good. And then I also attended one on social media and how to connect without going viral, and we've been doing a lot of social media things within our local school system, so I thought that was also very, very good. So overall, as conferences go, I thought it was a very good conference. Thought it was well-attended. I would imagine we had several thousand Board of Education members from across the country. Next year's in San Antonio, and I'm going to talk about school funding issues here in just a few minutes, but I would still encourage this Board of Education just a few minutes, but I would still encourage this Board of Education and future Boards of Education to place this conference on your, on your to-do list, if you will, your budget, and budget for that, because, and that would be as many of you who would like to attend, because, you know, this is, it's not unknown the Board of Education members receiving no compensation for the service that you have. It's tireless work, it's a lot of time, it's a lot of effort, but this is self-improvement, and it's an opportunity for you to go out, bring more information back towards the community, and share that information and move our district forward. So from that standpoint, I thought it was an excellent conference, and I appreciate the fact of having the opportunity to attend that. It was nice that it was in Denver, and it's going to be more of an effort to get there in the future. San Antonio's a little bit further. Typically, they rotate between San Diego and Orlando, and so it's going to become more difficult. But it was nice that it was somewhat in our backyard and easy to access. With that in mind, as I mentioned, school funding is the word of the day. We do have, or, excuse me, House Bill 2410, that's been proposed. It's been debated. It has a lot of the same things from our prior school funding formula, I mean, prior to the block grant, but there are also some things that are just different, and they are cause for concern. The total amount of the funding that goes into the one that's been proposed is about $70 million. That is a far cry from what the Supreme Court has ordered, and so there's still some work to be done. And this is without the legislature closing up their funding gaps right now, and they still have to kind of work on that. So, but that being said, I guess it's a first attempt. Some of the features of it is the implementing, or will over time, of full funding for all-day kindergarten, right now, and fortunately for us, because we've implemented that this year. But it's a three-year integration or funding level for all-day K, so at least we're going to be working on getting that in there. They are looking at base aid for student excellence, which would be $4,0170 compared to $3,852 right now, so that's an increase of about $300 on the base. And then they'll do a consumer price index increase each year, depending upon what that increase would be. Our old formula didn't have that. It's basically if they had the money, they would increase, if they didn't, they didn't. We would have two count days under the new formula. Everyone would. In the past, we've had, basically, all districts had a countdown September 20th. Under the new formula, it'd be September 20th and February 20th. The concern with that is that as populations move, they wanted to be able to lock it in. However, if you experience a growth, whatever you have on that 220 is probably going to be what you use going into the next year. So over the summer, if you're experiencing a growth in enrollment, you're not necessarily going to get new dollars for that. So that's a concern moving forward. Vocational, it removes vocational funding, the weighted funding, and basically says $100 per FTE from the general fund must be allocated to vocational education. Where that puts us in terms of the current dollars we have in current tech ed versus where we're going in the future, we should have to take a look at that. But it doesn't base it necessarily on the number of kids enrolling in certain classes. It just says for every student, you have $100 FTE that you need to set aside for vocational funding. So that's a little bit different way of looking at it as well. New facilities waiting would disappear. That's big for us. That's about the loss of about $400,000 that we wouldn't be able to replace. And so, especially with all the new buildings that we have going on, I was hopeful that maybe that whatever came out would include some form of new facilities waiting with all the projects that we have on the verge of being completed, or have already been completed, but it looks like those are going to go away. LOB, they tinkered with quite a little bit, local option budget. They created basically three new local option budgets. One would be a local foundation budget, which would be $1,150 per weighted FTE, and that would equalize it as they currently do. Then they have a local enhancement budget of $288 per weighted FTE, and that also would be equalized. And then you could, if you have a 33% cap on your LOB, and if not, you can always have an election to go to 33%, then they would allow you to set up a local activities budget. And basically, any time you increase your LOB dollars, it's going to create more of a burden on your local taxpayers, because that's where those dollars are generated. And so it's going to be interesting to see how, I mean, that's kind of a complicated approach toward local option budget. The change with that proposal for USD 305 would be in general fund, would be an increase of $732,338 in general fund state aid. So, you know, when we talk winners and losers, for us, we'd be on the positive side. LOB with new categories, budget authority would increase $417,000 with $198,189 being from state aid. So for that additional amount, we're going to have to levy locally. We'll have to increase our local mill levy to generate the amount of dollars that we can, that we can have. So it's going to be a combination of an increase in state aid, plus an increase in our local mill levy, in order to reach the funding expectations of this particular formula. So the bottom line is, it's not, it's a first attempt, but it's not where we need to be. This is a $70 million proposal that the Supreme Court has ordered, and they haven't ordered a number, but they have suggested they're looking anywhere from $800 million. So they're a long way from where they need to be. So they're going to continue to discuss this. I think they had three days of testimony last week. They suspended testimony today. Now, all this is on the birds of coming up with funding mechanisms to close the current shortfall. And currently, we have a proposal that's being introduced. If I can find it here. They need to close yet a $281 million revenue shortfall, but for the current fiscal year now, as you recall, there are some conversations about doing across-the-board budget cuts for school districts to help do this. That went away, and I think they received quite a bit of backlash from legislators when they brought that up, and so they backed away from that. To balance the current fiscal year budget, they're looking at borrowing about $180 million from idle funds, investment account, and repaying that over the next seven years. And they would also delay payment of approximately $150 million into Capers. And they would close that, and they would use those dollars saved and balance the current year budget. And so not a lot of new revenue coming in, they're just kind of moving dollars around at this point in time. Still a lot of conversation in terms of what they're going to do in terms of tax increases to raise additional revenue. So there's still a lot that needs to be done. We're going to have a break coming up soon, so hopefully they can, they'll have time to come back in May and be able to continue to work. It's going to be very difficult with the work that they have ahead of them. I would be surprised if they finish the legislative session on time, because there's just so much that they have to accomplish between now and then. So we would be a winner in this, but it's still, to me, it doesn't go near far enough as it should in terms of what the Supreme Court has ordered for equity and adequacy for our students. So, any questions about that thus far?
Yeah, Bill, does everybody on this board get Schools for Fair Funding newsletter?
I believe, now, I know that, have all of you received that? Because I think you're on the mailing list, emailing list. You should be receiving that from John Robb, I believe. Does that, have you, does that sound familiar?
It doesn't to me, but I think maybe Ramona and I don't. Is that right? Yeah, I think you're right.
Okay.
There might be something we...
Do you receive that?
I do.
Okay. I will. If you do not receive that, let me know, and I will turn your name into John Robb, and we'll make sure that each of you receive those same updates, because it's really good information to reach out to your local legislators and say, you know, "Here's a proposal that is in our best interest, you need to really consider voting for this," and to at least find out what their position is on current issues. But if you do not receive that, let me know, and I'll reach out to John and make sure that we get that sent to you, okay? Because that is very, very good information.
Thank you.
Okay? Anything else on the legislative side of it? Still a lot of work that needs to be done, and just a lot of work needs to be done. They're not where they need to be yet, so. Okay, other than that, updated John School Board Convention, had the opportunity, gosh, time flies, I think it was a week before spring break, to go out to Schilling Elementary School and recognize the, our elementary teacher of the year for the upcoming year, and she will now be moving on into the state competition. That'd be Ms. Nancy Bauer. And Ms. Bauer is the elementary music teacher at Schilling Elementary School, and has done just a phenomenal job working with students at Schilling Elementary School. And Ms. Zimmerman, I see you smiling. You probably have worked with Ms. Bauer, I would imagine, in the past.
I'm just smiling because so many music teachers...
Yes, that's a good thing, isn't it? That is a good thing. Well, it is, and you mentioned, I mean, besides Ms. Bauer, to see the work of Mr. Gary, and a lot of the work of all of our music teachers, it's good to see them receiving that recognition. But went out, had an opportunity to present that to her, and then she had kindergarten students in there, so you know how difficult it is to explain to students what the state teacher of the year program's all about to five-year-olds. So they weren't quite, they were just cheering. They just really liked the fact that she's getting something. So, but it was really, it was fun to do that, and now she'll move on to the next level of competition, and hopefully we'll be able to, between our middle school and our elementary teacher of the year, have an opportunity to move forward to the state level. It's such a great program, so. And then the last item, last week, again, the week before spring break, weeks were kind of running together, had the opportunity with Ms. Peters to attend the food service appreciation dinner at Lakewood Middle School. And that's always fun. I mean, those folks don't necessarily receive all the recognition they should receive for preparing and serving nutritious meals to our students, and it's such, just a fun group of people. I mean, I really enjoy going and visiting with them and talking to them, because they just have, they just have, they just have good time, you know? And so all I, I just want to say is, it's all the positives to our food service program, because they do just outstanding work for our kids. So thank you to all of them. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Okay, and we need an executive session for negotiations?